Planning Board Meeting to Order. Could we all rise for a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the Secretary perform a roll call attendance.
Here.
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 Here. Okay. The Board members have received the minutes from the Secretary for the March 7th meeting. If there are no questions or concerns, entertain a motion to accept that minutes is written. So move.
Second.
Okay, motions made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. First item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding a Tarpon Towers site plan and special use permit. I guess at this point, we are looking at a vote of the resolution, which was produced by the planner. I see there's nobody here from Tarpon Towers this evening. So I guess at this point, with that said, I guess everybody's reviewed the resolution as drafted?
Yes.
All right, so there's no discussion on it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as drafted.
So may. Second.
Sit, motions made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Actually, go through for your roll call attendance, please, for the record.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. All right. Okay, that one is now done. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is BJ's Wholesale Club Self-Service Fueling Station.
I can see them out in the hall, would you like me to get them?
Yeah, somebody want to grab that?
Yeah, I'll grab one.
Good evening again, everybody. I appreciate you having us back. For the record, my name is Peter Yaski, I'm with First Hartford Realty Corporation. We're a real estate developer with an address of 149 Colonial Road, Manchester, Connecticut. We are here with BJ's Gasoline this evening, and I brought the cavalry with me, although we promised not to talk all night. But Karen Maginowski with Bowler Engineering is here tonight. You might remember Steve Bukas who was with us the last meeting, Steve was unable to attend. I have, he probably needs no introduction at this point, but Mike Nowicki from Ecological Solutions. And then also with me tonight, I have Mort No Boyl, who's a Site Development Manager with BJ's, as well as Margaret Patterson and Sam Nugent?
When.
When, I'm sorry, Sam, from Jones Langlos Al. They're project consultants for BJ's as well. So, real quick, I'll just kind of give you guys a recap of where we are, I think you probably already know, and then I'll turn it over to Karen and Mike. So, as you all recall from our informals, we've been here a few times in front of you this evening, and our discussions have centered around what was actually a previously unknown wetlands that we ended up identifying with our fieldwork through Mike, and the fact that that wetlands is within the 100-foot buffer of the Town of Wapengers for 949, or 1146 US 9, excuse me. So, we do propose to impact the wetlands buffer. So, our project is therefore seeking relief under Section 137 of your Wetlands Regulations for these improvements. We've always been, there's two wetlands on that site, if you all remember, there's one in the rear, and then there's this newly discovered, call it pocket wetlands, that's not on the town or state mapping, but it's there. We've always been compliant with the one in the rear. The area that's challenged us on this site is the one up front. So, what we've done, when we last met, we proposed, again, no disturbance to either of the wetlands themselves, we're not planning on touching the wetlands, we never were. The issue is, we were planning on disturbance to the 100-foot Town of Wapinger buffer. So, that strategy's not changed, and I'm happy to report that since our last meeting, we've made some strong progress and some meaningful changes that I think you guys will see alleviates the concerns that we've had regarding specifically petroleum within that buffer. So, as you know, your board has discretion to grant relief under Section 137 of your code, and we've done so in the past with projects up and down Route 9. So, it's, in our understanding, both those seeking to work within that regulated area and alter actual wetlands have both been approved here. So, again, the last time we met, you all expressed concerns about having fuel equipment, so the tanks, the pumps, any fuel lines within that buffer, and certainly the precedent that that may set for any future applications for fuel stations coming forward in town, trying to make a similar presentation. So, with that said, we went back to our clients, and we're pleased to report that Karen and her team were able to significantly alter this site, I shouldn't say significantly, but realign the site, so that what we basically did is we've pulled all that fueling component outside of that 100-foot buffer, we've also pulled the septic out, I believe. So, really, all we're asking for relief now is the paving and impervious within that buffer, there's no building proposed in there, the canopy's pulled outside of that buffer, it's just the paving. But, most importantly, I think, all that fueling component is pulled out, so we're not asking for relief to put fuel inside the wetlands buffer at all. And Karen can speak more about ways that we will, God forbid there's a spill, do mitigate that, but again, all that fuel has been pulled out. So, in addition to doing that, and what Mike will speak too, is we've also submitted a plan to regrade the site to actually enhance those wetlands on site. So again, we have that productive, higher functioning wetland in the rear, which Mike has reported on, we have a lower functioning wetland in the front, which we've discovered. What we plan on doing is actually connecting the two, so I think that will satisfy a portion of your code, which says, obviously, you don't want an applicant to come in and do anything detrimental to a wetland, but you also want to preserve the quality and quantity of wetlands within the community. So we're actually enhancing it, so we're actually giving a little bit more wetland that was previously there, and again, this is not my area of expertise, so I'll certainly let Mike speak to that. We've also received your TDE's comments and Dutchess County's comments, and thank you for those. So, I know one of the comments was looking at even further reducing the impervious, the parking spaces, obviously, there's no convenience store with this, we can certainly do that, and I'm happy to go back to our team, I'm probably jumping ahead, but happy to go back, we've already spoken and actually come up with some red lines to get rid of a good amount of parking on this space, it is overparked, I agree, as well as the dumpsters, we're not going to generate the kind of waste that needs two dumpsters, so we'll take care of that. Just in closing, as we've said, you know, this is a long vacant, four-and-a-half acre parcel, strict enforcement of the buffer here, it really hampers any ability, I think, in my respectful opinion, for redevelopment of the parcel. Again, if we were to stay completely impervious within that buffer, it gives you about a half an acre to work with, and it's about 72 feet wide, so there's not a lot of options for that site. So we're hoping that this, you take into account your reasonable use of land consent with responsible land management, and that we hope we've demonstrated both here for you tonight. So, again, BJ's has been in the community for many years, they've long sought fuel, it's a product that their members expect them to have, their competitors, and they offer it, and it's a critical component of their business. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Karen, and I appreciate your time tonight, and thank you. And if there's any questions for the team, we're happy to answer them as well.
Thanks again, Peter. Karen Maginowski from Bowler Engineering, again, for the record. So I will walk the board through the site plan changes, as Peter mentioned, we've received a lot of feedback along the way, so we're excited to present this plan this evening, and the pretty substantial changes that have been made here. Starting at the front of the site, the access has been reconfigured so that the right-in-only is on the southerly portion, and then the exit-only is at the northerly portion of the site, so that you are to avoid any traffic conflicts that are there when entering or exiting. And then you have a drive aisle that manages the vehicles to pull into the canopy with the fueling islands, there are six islands, so 12 spaces that are there. And the buffer line is shown here, so as you can see, just this pavement area in this portion behind the canopy is within the wetland buffer, and any fueling and tanks that are here have been pulled outside of that, as we know that was one of the main comments that has been there. The nine parking spaces referred to are back in here, and again, as Peter mentioned, we can evaluate losing some of those, which should help lose some of the impervious, as well as minimizing the size of the dumpster enclosure that's there. One of the benefits of this use is its very limited septic, so it's another reason it's a good use for the development of this property, and the septic system also located out of both buffers is back in this corner here. And then the area proposed for stormwater management is in this green area between the wetlands, and then our wetland mitigation area is back in here. And if there are any specific questions to that or the plantings, again, Mike Nowicki's here this evening to answer those. So we're pretty excited, again, about where we've come with this layout, and looking forward to the board's feedback this evening.
No, I could use a little. Yeah, I'll stand still. Yeah, so, as we discussed previously, my goal was to connect the mediocre wetland, the lower quality wetland, it's really formed from whenever it was driven on, probably with an excavator, 15, 20 years ago, that's when I first was on that property in 99, and it was, it had formed from tracks compressing the soil, causing a pocket of water, and it's filled with invasive wetland plants, purple loose dry phragmites, that kind of stuff. The rear wetland is the forested wetland, right at the edge of fill, because the site was filled at one point, and that's the productive part of the wetland, the more functionally adequate part of this wetland. What we're trying to do for impacts to the buffer to the lower quality wetland is to connect that lower quality wetland by excavating down to the water table and clay layer, and connect it, and have one larger wetland on the site. Granted, there will be less buffer, but right now, you have a buffer that's really protecting a low-quality area. If we can have that as one larger wetland, it would take on the attribute to the highly functional wetland, because right now it's isolated, water goes, it stays in there, it doesn't contribute to any of the functions that wetlands normally provide, because it's so small and isolated. So if we could connect it, plant it, monitor it for whatever period of time to ensure that it becomes a wetland, that's about the best we can do for wetlands for that site. What you're getting for buffer impacts is an increase in wetland area, which is above and beyond most of the time.
Do you know what the ratio of that would be?
I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the impacts are off the top of my head to the buffer and how much wetland we're providing, if somebody has those numbers.
Particularly considering, I guess, what would that impact be, because there's the impervious service, there's the access drive, all of that, there's also the stormwater basin, which would be put in, in that buffer, which I certainly would consider disturbance, depending on how it would function, and we didn't get a lot of information about how that stormwater would function.
Exactly, because sometimes stormwater basins, and we used to do this in Wapinger a lot, stormwater basins, if we planted them, could actually function as part of a wetland system, if it was allowed to feed into the wetland. So if you plant it, that could be actually a helpful situation. Wildlife will use it, and that's the goal, that's one of the functions of these wetlands, is any wildlife that's in the back of that site and beyond can utilize these areas. But I'll find out the size, I just don't have it off the top of my head. We were close with impacts, I believe.
Impacts to the buffer?
That's it.
Bruce, would you like me to speak to the concerns of the board, or do you want to discuss them?
You go ahead and speak on the rest of the issue, I guess, regarding the wetland you're talking about.
In general, to voice the conversation we had.
Yeah, I mean, I know we have, yeah, I mean, I'll talk on the one issue right now, which is, so just regarding the site, I mean, I'm trying to, we're still trying to get a grasp of putting something, you know, putting this into an environmentally sensitive area, you know, where we've had issues with, you know, recently of, you know, gasoline spills, you're going to put something like this there where it could become more of an issue by dumping it into the wetland, as opposed to, you know, the previous location that this was proposed some years ago up at BJ's Wholesale Club property. I know the board feels that it's a much better, the BJ's location would be a much better location, only because it's a reuse of that property, the property has become somewhat stagnant up there. I know that the developer, the new owner of the property is looking to redevelop that property, and something like this may fit in a little better there than it would at this location. Yeah, that's our only, that's one of our big, you know, our big issues right now. You know, proposing, you know, the gas station in the wetland, it's something that at least none of us, while we've been on the board, have done, and then this is kind of opening up the door to other issues down the road. It would have to be a real, real deep look into the, you know, into the wetlands, I guess, to make it, to see if it's actually, you know, something viable. You know, does the, you know, is there a benefit at the end of the day by putting it here, or is it just, you know, the possibility of having, you know, more of an environmental issue that might have to get addressed in the future? It could be, you know, something there, and you know, you might end up losing more wetland area, or, you know, what leaks out into it, you know, is gonna, yeah, that much harder to clean up, so. Do what? Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'll let, let me let the planner weigh in a little bit more on some other issues too, with this site, you know, and then we can have some discussion.
Well, I think that, just building upon what the chairman has said, I think that the board has considerable concerns with this particular use in the wetland buffer. From the beginning, we've been concerned with, you know, the argument, well, let's mitigate those wetlands, let's enhance the functioning of that wetland, and then we've created a high-functioning wetland, ideally, with a gas station immediately adjacent to it, with so much impervious cover in that buffer. I think that the board would be concerned with any development in the wetland buffer to any degree, they take that very seriously, and given the particular use of this site, there are some pretty grave concerns there. We can go through our comment letter in more detail if you'd like, or we can speak to these points now.
I think we're all here, so I think we'd like to hear everything you folks have to say, but just before we do that, and I'll come around here, you know, again, I just, I want to, again, reemphasize the fact, if you look at the site, this is our wetlands buffer, right? So, again, we're not proposing a gas station in the buffer. I understand there's wetlands on the property, I understand it's the same piece of property, we're not denying that, we've actually come forward and said, hey, we found this issue and we wanted to talk about it. What we're now saying is, we're not asking you for, we're not seeking relief respectfully for any of this fueling component within this buffer, what we're seeking relief for is just this impervious pavement, and again, working to trim that up. So hypothetically, I believe the gentleman who owns, I believe the company who owns this dealership still owns this property, I think that's all part of DCH. So, if for whatever reason, let's say DCH came forward with an application and wanted to do a, you know, two or three pumps here just to fuel cars, they weren't proposing pavement anywhere down here, I understand there's a wetlands here, but again, in that respect, that application would come forward as site plan special permit under your regulations. It's, again, it's all these components, I understand, again, understand they're here, but all these components are actually outside of that buffer. So, again, I know we're asking for a fueling station, but we're not asking for relief to put the fueling station in a wetlands buffer. What we're asking for relief is just for the parking, which respectfully, I believe this board has granted before, so I just want to make that distinction before we move on. And Karen can also speak if we need to about some stormwater quality and things we can do in that regards as well, if you want us to do that now, or we can wait till the end of your comments.
No, we can go through the comments at the discretion of the board. Would you like us to go through our letters?
Yeah, I mean, the rest of the comments, I mean.
I think that, you know, when you came here as a conceptual, we talked about the pros and cons of wetland mitigation, there's a number of questions that we raised regarding that wetland mitigation to better assess the pros and cons of that proposal. Particularly, I would be curious, you know, and you have our comments, and I'm sure that you will respond to them, but I'm very curious about how, whether or not there are any replanting proposals or invasive species management proposals for the existing wetland, how that wetland would be connected, because from the grading plan that I saw, it isn't clear to me how one would drain into the proposed pond, it looks like that pond is self-contained, and it's not clear to me how one connects to the other, connects to the third. So I'm curious about that, I'm curious to get more information about the stormwater management basin, which is proposed in the buffer, which seems pretty close to the wetland as opposed to closer to the site, I'm curious about any kind of engineering practices that would be used to manage a potential spill, to treat runoff from that parking area. I would be curious to look at, you know, any and all opportunities to minimize impervious cover within the wetland buffer. Let me make sure I'm not forgetting anything.
One question.
Yeah.
What pond, stormwater pond or?
I guess I'm referring to the storm, the wetland mitigation area as the pond seems to be, you know, five to six feet deep, depending on neighboring grades, but based on the grading plan that I'm looking at, it looks like it is self-contained, that that grading wraps all the way around, and I'm not totally clear how, you know, would it only flow over into this area during a major weather event?
It's not supposed to be a pond, because the boring they had, we didn't have to do deep tests from the last meeting, because they had boreings done, so we found where the water table was, and tried to propose this thing about a foot and a half, like two feet above, which is difficult for wetlands, so it shouldn't be a pond.
Mike, could you stand up for speaking to a microphone, just because it's got to get picked up by the camera?
So the mitigation area isn't proposed to be just a pond, it's supposed to have substrate at the top, like a hydroic soil that's supposed to form, that's why we're trying to, we're dropping it down to where the water table is, and usually, wetlands are within the top 18 inches of that, so that's what it's proposed to be, more muddy than open water, that's why I didn't, I was just curious as to where pond came from. But how it connects, I could work with Bowler on that, because they did the grading for me, I just gave them the directions of zero to 3%, which is normally what a wetland is, and how it connects to the wetland, we could work on, if it's not evident, that's easy.
I'd be curious whether or not you've reached out to Army Corps at all, but at some point, we'll want to have a conversation with them if you choose to pursue this, just because we're altering the hydrology draining in to their wetland.
Yeah, I can give you correspondence for, sorry.
I think there's a microphone you can bring with you there.
I could get correspondence for you from Brian Orzal at the Corps, if, yeah, that's easy. They regulate filling, I mean, if we were trying to, if we were going to drain this wetland, we're actually going to improve the area, because there's so much fill back there, where we're trying to mitigate, that's all old fill, so that's going to get removed. And Brian, with the Corps regulates filling deposition of fill material into a wetland, that's why that grading, if I grade into the wetland, that'll trigger notification, and maybe that's not a bad thing, because I could get on a time clock with him, and that's actually an easier way to get correspondence out of him.
And it might result in a better, yeah. There are other things that we would need as part of a standard site plan if we move forward, things like the turning radii for emergency and fueling trucks. I'm curious about the extent of the limit of disturbance, it's not on here, but I'm assuming that it would be greater than the stormwater basin and the wetland mitigation area. I want to see the numbers about, you know, the limit of disturbance within, you know, on the site, but also within the wetland buffer as it relates to the area of wetland mitigation, landscaping, lighting, signage, et cetera.
There was one more, I want to gloss over it, when you were saying about maybe removing invasive species in that existing wetland, yeah, that's, I could, I could do that, I mean, that's part, yeah, that's easy, implant it with some, I mean, there's some native species in there, but removing the invasives would help, especially if we're going to connect it.
A narrative justifying both, you know, mitigation to this mitigation area, but also, I mean, if what you're saying is accurate, this is a poorly functioning wetland dominated by invasive species that isn't doing what we want it to do, I would think that, you know, the mitigation area that you have identified and the low-functioning wetland would all be wetland mitigation.
Yep.
But, yeah, and that would lend itself to a larger narrative, that would help me assess the pros and cons of the proposal, but again, it comes back to the reservations the board has with the use and its, you know, being adjacent to an environmentally sensitive area. So, these are all questions that I would like answers to, but I don't, I don't know whether they would sway the board.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all the comments, we've had a chance to review the letter as well, we certainly have a ways to go with that. At this point, we came back with a pretty significant layout change, as I mentioned, so we can definitely get into the details and design, provide those calculations, all those types of things, as we develop this further. We really just want to get the board's kind of feedback and buy-in that this layout and the fact that all fueling operations are out of the buffer, everything's out of the wetlands, that that's favorable for this site and development before we take it one step further and provide all those details. We understand some of them may be necessary to fully review that, but I think from a layout standpoint, if, you know, we're open to other suggestions, but if we could get your buy-in, that we're headed in the right direction with this, that would certainly be helpful this evening to continue and develop those other things. And to touch on the stormwater, the reason it's so far back is we have separation distances to meet, so for septic and storm, we've met all that with what's proposed there, and then everything is flowing that way, but we can certainly provide calculations, disturbances, everything on pipe drainage, everything else that may be needed there.
John, did you have anything before?
No, I mean, you know, it's very preliminary at this point, from an engineering standpoint, so there's not a lot I can comment on until they were to get into SWIP design and some of the things that we'll talk about tonight to demonstrate the connectivity and how the stormwater would be managed, you know, where there will be oil-water separators, that kind of thing. So, you know, we did provide a laundry list of comments, but there's nothing of the substance yet, so not much for us to go on.
Any of the board members have any comments? I know that, I know that we, you know, we did discuss it earlier, so I don't know what our feelings are now.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, a gas station in a wetland's not a good idea. I don't know if you've looked at any alternate sites around here for that, or, you know, up at the BJ's location, but.
Yeah, we were hired to.
We're really far, we're really on board with this project, you know, we also don't want you to waste a lot of money playing, you know.
I appreciate that, yeah, no, I do, we have looked at other projects and other opportunities in town. We have looked at other projects and other opportunities in town. I think the BJ's folks at one point, and you probably remember better than I do, worked on a project on, as an onsite fuel. This site was provided to us specifically as a site that needed to be offsite. I'd have to find out from BJ's exactly why that was the case, but we were told to go find something offsite. We were given a very specific set of parameters, and this is the site that we identified. So, unfortunately, we didn't find any other opportunities along Route 9. And again, you know, we, we were hoping we came here tonight with a plan that really struck a balance between protecting and enhancing the environment as well as economic development and keeping that fuel out of the, out of the buffer. So, I, you know, we, I keep hearing "gas station in a wetland", and I'm, I'm not sure I agree with that comment, very respectfully.
That's just how I feel about it.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree with Mark.
So, do I?
I agree with Mark.
You agree? I agree.
More to work from BJ's. I'd just like to add also that it's BJ's preference to be, to have gas on-site. It's a, it's much more of an efficient operation. Our members come in, they use the facility at the club. They come out, they get gas, they go home. Where they get gas, they use the club, they go home. Manpower-wise, it's half the manpower. So, it's advantageous for us to be at the club. It's what we prefer. Why we can't be at this club, I can't give you an answer for. I'll certainly, you know, provide something.
Well, right now, it's not currently permitted in the zone.
At the, at the club?
Right.
Okay. And maybe that's it, maybe, you know, and I'm willing to speculate beyond that, what the reasoning might be. But if we had, in the perfect world, we would actually absolutely be at the club. So, the fact that we were coming in here with an application not at the club, there's an absolute reason behind that, that we've exhausted the opportunity there and have that moved offsite. So, just for clarity, just so you understand, it is absolutely our preference, everything to be on-site, right at the, right at our members' fingertips, all at one location here, for whatever reason, that can't work, so we're looking offsite.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions. For the applicant, there's some complicated DOT drainage structures up along Route 9 in this area. It goes from east side of Route 9, west side of Route 9. I'm not sure exactly. I know there's a storm drain that runs from the property to the south across over to the new plaza there, and that was done, oh, 2010 timeframe? So, and, you know, historically, there were a lot of flooding issues there. I don't know, did you look at some of the property to the south? Is there any connectivity between these wetlands and those wetlands?
On Virgilus system?
Yeah.
No, they have a straight ditch coming down the property line, and this is offset.
Okay. Yeah, because the drainage kind of hops back and forth to the property on the cor- the property on the corner of Smithtown Road and Route 9 frequently gets flooded. So, it's, and this, I don't know if this is the high point there, or, you know, it's just, it's strange. It's a little weird.
Yeah, it's like that wetland in the back.
Speculation, but I don't know if that wetland in the back is draining down that swell towards Route 9. I don't know the...
It's not really. The wetland in the back of the, of, you know, the Virgilus building goes kind of under the parking lot out to the front, I believe.
Yeah.
And so, I don't, like I said, and it looks, is there also a, is there, wetlands on the back of the DCH property that you're working with?
Yeah, on the back, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Big forested swamp.
Right. And is that connected to this as well?
It's connected to the swamp in the back of the site, yeah. Yep.
Because, I mean, that's one of the concerns with respect to a spill and just connection, as to how it might flow, you know, through whatever's there. I looked at aerial access, and, you know, there was a, looked like there was a pond or a wetland, you know, more pronounced back in the...
Oh, yeah, way in the back. Yeah, when DCH...
Which was filled, you know, because it was, you know, the old aerials.
Yeah. Well, when Starback owned this piece 15 years ago, whatever, they wanted to put a dealership and whack that whole well, that whole thing even in the back. And that's what, that pocket on the side there, it's probably from those guys when they were filling that, the back part of it, driving through that soil and just compacted it. And that's why it's all, you know, loose strife. And then you got the ditch, that's a man-made ditch between Virgilus and the site.
And then, does DBC have any guidance or any recommendations regarding petroleum storage in or adjacent to a wetland?
That I don't know, Jimmy. That I don't know. Ask him.
It's a, it's going to be a hard sell. The board's kind of, you know, after thinking about this for a while, it's, you know, it becomes, you know, promoting something, you know, that doesn't need to be there. You know, yeah, there's, you know, there's other, you know, there are other sites, you know, that may be, you know, more suitable, you know, especially for redevelopment. I mean, it's, there's enough empty spaces, you know, that could be redeveloped than to put this into a wetland, just because it's, you know, it's, it's empty right now. And then, you know, with the wetland mitigation, you know, is it, is it going to work? Isn't it going to work? You know, that becomes, it sounds like it's becoming a little more of a concern, you know, for our professionals.
Yeah, there's actually like two or three sites closer to the BJ's property to, I think they're above him.
If I could, you know, before this site is, you know, not in the running anymore, not that it's a, it's a formal application, if you guys would ever, I don't know if the Plenary Board does sidewalks, and you can see what I'm looking at and what's, you know, it's hard on a picture. It's easier in the field.
Yeah.
Because you'll see where that, what that wetland is. And I know, I know, I get, you know, and I get it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, for us to go out and walk through there, I mean, that's...
Not only a few ticks, what's the big deal?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we could go out and look at it. Whether or not that changes anything, I don't know. It's kind of tough without, you know, an objective opinion.
I'll go with you guys, or, you know, you could have...
Go Malcolm, we could take Malcolm out, yeah.
I'm always having, always having...
You know, John, I mean, we could go, I mean, it's up to you. If you want to, you know, if you want to do that, I mean, we could go take a look at it. There's, there's no promises, there's no, you know, it's still, you know, it is what it is. I know, I'm just speaking on behalf of the board, because I've been, yeah, I've been hearing it. I'm, you know, it's like, it's a concern. I mean, it's not our first gas station that we've dealt with in town. You know, most of the, you know, redevelopment is one thing when you have one that was there or one that was, you know, there, but it closed down, or, you know, where you take a piece of property that, you know, really is abutted by a bunch of, you know, other things that really aren't going to be affected as much. It's not as environmentally sensitive sites, let's put it that way. Yeah, I leave it up to the board at this point. Do you guys, would a, would a site visit be helpful to go out and take a look at this property and walk it, you know, with, with them? Or do you just not want to do it at all?
At least you can say I'm not BSing.
I don't think it's going to matter.
No.
Honestly, no.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to help either.
Okay. All right.
Give it a shot.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, I think, you know, with enough, I said, we've discussed this. It's just I think that the board has an uncomfortable feeling with it regarding the, you know, just regarding the environmental sensitivity. It's, it's been an issue all the other times, you know, that you've come in. It just, you know, at this point, it doesn't seem to, to work for this site at all.
Well, we'll have to regroup as a team here and discuss next steps. Again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we decided tonight, coming in here, that we were able to actually pull that component out here, so it was our understanding or our thought, we weren't asking for a gas station in a wetland or even a gas station in a wetlands buffer. We were asking for drop a couple of parts. You know, again, I think DCH could probably come in with an application to do a gas pump that not pave anything, and I'm not sure how that would work. I'm not going to, not going to speculate on that, but...
Yeah, a gas station's a gas station, no matter who the, you know, no matter who it is.
No, I understand that. If there's no impact to that buffer, if it's on the corner of that property, again, I'm getting into hypotheticals here. You know, technically, I'm not sure what, what the jurisdiction would be, because there's no impact to the wetlands buffer with pavement. The fact that we're paving into that, because we have to to get vehicles in and out, seems to be triggering this larger thought that there's a, a gas station going in that buffer, which when we first came in and met, that was absolutely the case. You know, again, we put our heads together after our meeting in December and came back with what we were hoping would be a, a proposal to really balance economic development, environmental safety, and we understand the need for that. So...
At this, yeah, at this point, I mean, as I said, just speaking with the other board members, I mean, it's, you know, it's preceded your own risk, but, I mean, we've made our comments.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate your time. We'll put our heads together and let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is Locustree Residential Properties LLC.
Good evening, I'm Mark Chicorelli, representing Locustree. This is my first time, it won't be nearly as serious as that. The project that we're proposing, it's been in front of the board a few times already. It's just improvements to the parking lot and the areas of operation. You know, we had, it's been in, in, in front of the planning board a couple of times. Last meeting, we determined we needed a variance for our, for some poly tanks and a hoop house, which we received. So, again, Troy asked me to come and represent us tonight. We did receive a couple of minor technical comments from the town engineer. They wanted a couple of details that were on the C5 plan or CO5 plan, which we have no problem presenting and giving to you. It's a cut sheet detail for a concrete slab. And again, as you can see, where's that little thing? I don't know how far you guys have gotten into this, but we're just looking to expand, expand a couple parking spots due to growth. We have, with all our staff there, and we have visitors or clients coming, it gets a little, gets a little dicey, not to mention the parking lot's 25 years old, and it's time. So, we're looking to expand some landscape area here. So, when you come down Airport Drive, you can't really look in the back, so we can kind of do some coverage in the back, and also coverage on the front corners. That's it. Any questions?
All right. So, do you have any questions regarding, anything for the applicant?
We discussed earlier they were going to repaint those.
Yeah, I believe there was some tanks and...
Yes, yeah, there's two poly tanks that we have a variance for. They're yellow, we're going to paint them in the back, paint them black, so the...
Screening for the neighbors.
Exactly, yes. That'll be taken care of. There was also a question about new signage. There's going to be no new signage on the street. So, whatever, the sign, we did replace the sign that was there, but we just replaced the sign over there. Because again, that was all too, we painted the building as well. Same color, a little nicer.
Okay. All right.
That's really all I got from his notes, so...
Okay. All right. Everything's pretty much, I guess, is, everything's been addressed over these last few meetings from the last letters. It looks like everything is, is done. You know, the DMV, obviously, if we move forward with this, the conditions, I guess a condition approval for, for the engineers' items would have to be added in there as a condition of approval.
Yeah, there were, can I talk? Oh, yeah, there were a few...
Yeah, the items on the engineer's letter.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, they haven't been addressed, that would be. So, the first, I mean, the first order of business would be for us is regarding the parking, because actually, I guess, there's wordage in the town code that says that, you know, if you, if you exceed the minimum amounts, you know, they need to get a waiver by the board.
Yeah. Again, that's just the business has grown, you know...
It's a modest increase in parking as well.
I don't see any issue with the parking.
I think it's only like three spots, but don't...
It's more, right, it's just more basically the things with the business taken off, so it's a... So, the first thing that we need to do is, I'll entertain a motion to approve a waiver for the increase in parking.
I'll move that.
Second? Okay, motion's made, second, all favor? Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. All right. I guess at this point, I mean, pretty much if you addressed all the items that need to be addressed, entertain a motion to authorize the planner to draft the final resolution.
So made.
Second? Okay, motion's made, seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's when the motion carries. So, you are all set?
Onward and upward.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good evening. Okay. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is discussion regarding a site plan and special use permit for Downey Energy Liquid Propane Storage.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, esteemed colleagues here and professionals, and our outstanding clerk. Dennis Lynch for the applicant. My first and fundamental question is, how did this thing get on the agenda tonight? My last communication with the chair and the board was on January 22 of 2020, when I said, "When you have an expert, which you claimed you were looking for, please tell us and we come back." All of a sudden, I find out it's on the agenda. The agenda doesn't mention anything, anything about a positive declaration, nothing. Yet, when I walk in and speak to the planner tonight and say, "Is there a positive declaration?" Oh, he says, "Yeah, it's, it's been prepared." Not only that, but he gives me a memo, gives the board a memo dated today's date, which I'm copied on. I haven't spoken to that planner about any positive declaration. I haven't talked to anybody other than asking your counsel this was on tonight. And so, how did we get to this point?
Well, as we were advised by counsel that we should issue a positive declaration regarding this, this item, I believe that you had, you did have conversations with them, at least that's what was relayed to us.
I had a conversation on Friday, I said, "Is this going to be on?" And he said, "Yet it's on." I don't know, what do you think about why it's on? I don't know all the basis, there's a tremendous amount of material. I'm assuming that the planner looked at, because he checked off that there would be some impacts on many, many, many areas. I'm assuming he just didn't make it up out of the top of his head, but if he did, maybe I should know that. But the last time, there was a secret review many months ago. It was for above-ground tanks. There was a negative declaration prepared. Now, we have tanks that are buried, and somewhere, somehow, there's a positive declaration prepared. At the very least, I, as the attorney for the applicant, need to see and look at what the planner relied upon so I can comment upon the proposed positive declaration. That's a minimum, I think, that, that I would ask the board to give me that opportunity. Again, I literally got the positive declaration when I walked in here about 6:03 and asked the planner, and I was told by the other individual professional here that the clerk would give it to me, which she did about 1:00 minutes ago. So, I would ask the board not to act on the positive declaration tonight. Let us look at the documentation. We may agree with some of the items, we may disagree. We may be able to provide our own items. You know, we've done extensive information that we've submitted. So, I'd like that opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I, you know, I, listen, this is what we were recommended to do by our counsel. We tried to have an open session to let people from the public talk, and also the fire district talk on the record, and that meeting was hijacked, and they weren't given the opportunity to speak. But their concerns, which were brought up prior in the public hearing process, Mr. Silvestri... Silvestri, and in response to Fire District's letter, basically, I mean, we're being kind of pushed to, we have to, for secret, we have to either, it's either a negative declaration or a positive declaration.
Well, can I just suggest that your esteemed attorney, is an excellent attorney, doesn't tell you what to do. He may give advice, but if their advice was to have a positive declaration, what's the background for it? If you're telling Mr. Silvestri's material, which is the only material we've seen, was the background? We've supplied voluminous records that show that basically Mr. Silvestri, in all due respect, is not an expert in this particular area. And speaking of experts, if I just, one second more, speaking of experts, you know, if you're going to do a positive declaration, you need experts in the industry to let you know what are issues, what not issues. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, it's, at this point, I mean, I'm just going by what we've been, you know, advised.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I mean, the, Mr. Lynch's request to respond to the comments, I think is appropriate, and, you know, actually, you know, it's going to delay the applicant more than anything else. I mean, but again, I, I think it's, it's a fair request, he can comment, and on the board can, you know, consider it. With respect to the materials that were prepared, there is a Part Two and a Part Three, I mean, the Part Two is really the check, the checks. I mean, we can give you the Part Two of the EAF that the, the planner and I had looked at, and you can certainly comment on it. You know, again, a lot of them are just kind of one checkbox in, you know, the thing.
Agreed fully.
And to the extent that, you know, you want to submit information, and we could narrow, you know, we could narrow the issues down even further, and I have no problem with that, whether we do it now, whether we do it later, I think that's fine. And, you know, I think under the circumstances, that's more than reasonable. You know, the, the one issue with respect to the buried fuel tanks, and if you comment on this, this, you know, the, the zoning amendments that the town board were proposed before the town board didn't mention buried or underground, buried fuel tanks or above fuel.
No question.
So, you know, right now, where we're playing the ball as it lies, you know, and I think that would actually be helpful, to the extent you could, you know, supply some of that information regarding buried versus.
Mr., sorry.
Above ground. And again, some of that may carry over into, you know, if we go forward, so.
It's, Mr. Lynch, I have no problem, and, you know, I, I say that we, we call something, in my experience, informal scoping. It's not scoping, where we get and look at the materials before a positive declaration's prepared. But if I can get the materials, I can look at them, whatever your next board meeting is, I'm sure it's no, no less than two weeks, that's all I would need, if I get the materials, look at them and come back. And there's other questions here, but those are the fundamental questions.
All right. At this point, I think, I think we need to go into executive session, discuss matters with legal counsel. Anybody agree with me or no?
Yes.
Yes, definitely. Okay. So entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So made.
Second. To meet with legal counsel for a legal related question. All right, let's go.